Twenty seven. Um, please stand for the pledge and the invitation. I pledge allegiance to the file. As seen somewhere. And to the world, our worship.
Dance.
Nation under God and with his. And we have our police chaplain here, Andy, who is going to give the invitation.
You can better there. You all prove things. Father, we just gathered today to talk about your business, to talk about this city and its needs. We talk about things that are necessary to see this town and city continue, this town continue to prosper. I ask you for your protection over this board, to get a protection over this citizens. As a police chaplain, it is my, it is my job to pray and to be over them as a spiritual advisor, as well as the staff. But as I'm also sworn to swear, I'm also sworn to pray for this town. And Father, I just thank you for the opportunity to be able to do so. So in this meeting today, I said you would bless the conversation that takes place. Because I know that nothing in this place, except you, is all for good for the people that are here. But we ask you, Father, for your peace, your comfort, your joy in this room. And I ask you for protection for every person here, especially our police officers, who I love so very much. We thank you for the first response to you. Good Lord, I thank you for Madam Mayor, who I've known for, since I've been a chaplain. I ask you, Father, continue to bless her, continue to guide her in the city council board as well. Thank you for your guidance, your leadership over this town. And thank you, in his name of Jesus, amen.
Okay, well, I have been seeing a couple of comments on Facebook regarding the fact that people are having a hard time hearing us, which we'll take a look at. But I'm wondering if maybe we kind of, if someone wants to speak, they kind of from the audience, or turn a little cockeyed, so that the audience can hear better. See how it works. And we'll work on getting something that is a little more um, it's louder. So Elise, roll call.
Commissioner Manion.
Present.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Present.
Andrew Sadowill.
Present.
Your expert.
Here. Awesome. Um, okay, I'm sorry, I'm a little. We have a few proclamations or presentations. Um, Laura Bach, is that right? Um, Metro Plan Vision Zero, and please come up and please try and be loud.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, thank you so much. I think it's evening. My name's Laura Bach, and this is your presentation, the name of Metro Plan Orlando, which is the MQ here in the region. Excited to be here today to talk a little bit about the Vision Zero Central Florida Initiative that's currently being working. Uh, it's a little bit over the years, I think, I'm going to talk a little bit about what the Vision Zero Central Florida Initiative is all about, what Vision Zero actually is. I talked through some crash trends here locally, and then, and we're talking about how did we get here? Well, last year, Metro Plan Orlando was awarded an approximately $3.8 million federal grant under the Safe Streets and Roads for All discretionary grant program. That grant program is going to be awarding $5 billion in funds over five years, from 2022 to 2026. And they're rewarding once opportune types of grants. The first types are planning and demonstration grants. Those fund things like developing Vision Zero action plans, which is what we're using the money for. Also supplemental planning to get projects so that they're ready to go to construction. And also to fund demonstrational pilot projects so that jurisdictions can test different types of safety treatments in their area. The other types of grant funding that they're funding are implementation grants. Those are grants that can fund actual construction of infrastructure projects or educational campaigns, that sort of thing. But the caveat being that for implementation grant funding, a jurisdiction must have in place a Vision Zero Action Plan or Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. Excellent. So that's where we come in. Eventually, there we go. So we're developing uh, action plans for uh, quite a few action plans. First, we're doing a regional action plan that covers all three counties within the metro plan planning area. That's Ostula, Orange, and Seminole Counties. Um, leading that regional action plan and the regional task force that has representation from each of the counties, several cities, DOT, and others. That task force is providing data and guidance as we develop that plan. Additionally, we're developing action plans for each of the different counties. Each of those county plans is being guided by a steering committee. Where each of the cities within the county have representation on that steering committee. And then we're also doing nineteen different city-specific plans, including one for the town of Oakland. Uh, and that, those plans are being guided by a working group that involves members of the local staff. Uh, so all together, we're doing twenty-three action plans. And at the end of it, all of the jurisdictions within our planning area will be eligible to apply for that implementation grant funding. And we like All right, so what can we expect from the plan and what's special about Orlando's role? First of all, you can expect a detailed assessment of transportation safety issues within the town of Oakland, currently underway, and identification at the end of it of new feasible safety improvements to improve safety on Oakland's roadways. The town, in all of this, I mentioned the working groups that are helping to guide the development of each of the city plans. Um, those working groups helped with um, figuring out which, which uh, events we can target for public outreach in developing the high injury network. High injury network is that network of roads within a jurisdiction that had the most crashes, with the idea being that if we focus on improving things on the high injury network, we're going to have the biggest pain for our buck in improving safety. Um, the working group is also helping with identifying which strategies we're actually going to pursue, which policy changes we may be pursuing, that are going to go into that action plan. The other major role that the town has is to eventually, once we have it ready, adopt the Vision Zero Action Plan as well as the Vision Zero Resolution. Both of those things are required in order to be knowledgeable for that implementation. Once the plan is adopted, a couple of different things will be true. First of all, we'll have a list of prioritized safety projects that can be pursued within the town of Oakland. And those will be incorporated directly into our 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. That's our long-range planning effort that we update every five years. And in fact, we just kicked off planning for the 2050 MTP. So all of those prioritized projects will be incorporated into the MTP. And then we prioritize the regional funding allocations, that is the work of Metro Plan Orlando. Uh, the other thing that will happen is that all of those plans and projects will be eligible to pursue additional implementation or supplemental planning grant funding. Next slide, please. So what is Vision Zero? Uh, at its core, Vision Zero is a proactive and preventive approach to eliminate specifically traffic deaths and severe injuries on the transportation system. Next slide. Uh, there are a few sort of tenets of the Vision Zero approach. First of all, it reframes traffic deaths as preventable. Uh, it integrates human failing into the approach. This is on preventing fatal and severe crashes, rather than trying to eliminate all crashes. Um, and it aims to establish a safe systems approach to per- pursuing safety on our roads. Next slide. Uh, so this slide sort of summarizes some of the differences between what we've been doing in the past and uh, sort of what's different under the Vision Zero approach. A couple that I want to point out, I'll talk a little bit about. First of all, we used to try and talk about preventing crashes. We'd say, well, we can't prevent all crashes, bound to happen, so people are going to die or get severely injured. The Vision Zero approach says, there may be crashes, but there are things that we can put in place to reduce how intense those crashes are, so that we can really try and get to zero fatalities and zero severe injuries. And that's what we're willing to get to. And rather than focusing on um, individual responsibility, we're now focusing on there being a system approach to, to getting to zero, to zero fatalities. And this move, next slide, please. So Vision Zero really took off initially in Sweden back in 1995. And they've seen significant improvements in their safety situation over the ensuing twenty-four years. It saw sixty-five percent reduction in fatalities within the country. Of course, we are not Sweden, um, but it's kind of hard to see from there. But there are a lot of green dots on that map of the US. And over all of the cities within the US that have become Vision Zero cities, have adopted Vision Zero Action Plans and adopted Vision Zero Resolutions. And that number of cities is increasing as we have this grant funding available now to do that Vision Zero Action Planning. What we've seen in looking at what has happened to cities within the US, them saw a significant decrease in that fatalities and severe injuries. For those that start to see um, something leveling off, that that reduction over time, it allows them to look, to take a second look at the strategies that they're pursuing, to double down on the ones that are working well, and to maybe pivot away from the ones that aren't working as well. Next slide, please. Uh, so this part of the, the presentation, I like to call the why. Why is it that we pursue this? Why is this initiative important? This chart shows fatalities within the entire Metro Planet Orlando region from 2012 to 2022. And the big takeaway here is that that number of fatalities is increasing. And that the rate of increase is faster than the growth within the regions. And we're seeing the same thing on a statewide level. Um, fatal crashes have been on the rise, upcasing population. And in particular, looking at our vulnerable road users, our bicyclists, our pedestrians, while about two percent of overall crashes involve bicyclists and pedestrians, it comprises about a third of our fatalities. So that's something that we're really paying attention to as we pursue um, different types of projects through this Vision Zero Initiative. Next slide, please. Um, these, these types of headlines are things I think that we all see too much. And really, at the end of the day, the big why is we're trying to not see these types of headlines. We don't want to see headlines about people getting killed in our communities. Excellent. Um, sort of zeroing in on, on what are some of the crash trends here in the town of Oakland? Um, overall, in terms of the, the total number, um, you don't have, it's not a stop to you. In the town of Oakland, over the years from 2018 to 2022, when we take our data from Civil Core Analytics, um, there are about a hundred and thirty-four total crashes, with two of those being severe injuries. And thankfully, no fatalities. So you're doing pretty well, but there's still a lot to be done with trying to get to zero fatalities and serious injuries. One of those serious injuries So as we're moving through the analysis, uh, what our teams are doing, if you're looking at this action plan, which is typically the Hilton team, is looking at where are the crashes? What types of crashes are we seeing? So this slide sort of says crashes by day of the week. You can see that sort of Fridays tend to be where the most crashes occur. Slide. Um, and this one is a little bit more telling, this is crashes by time of day. Um, and if you'll take a look at the, at the charts, of course, I apologize. But a lot of the crashes, we have a real AM, PMP, um, sort of rising crashes. And so, uh, what the team are looking at are, are things like, what are some of the things that we can put in place to reduce crashes during those peak periods when perhaps the messuring Uh, so this part of the presentation is the how. Um, we're approaching things using the safe systems approach. And the safe systems approach is a sort of data-driven holistic method to approaching roadway safety that centered around six uh, safe system principles. Those are that death and serious injury is unacceptable, that humans make mistakes, that humans are vulnerable, that responsibility is shared, that safety is proactive, and that redundancy is critical. And so we're taking those principles and looking at different types of projects or strategy that we could approach in five different areas. How we can make our vehicles safer? How we can reduce speeds and reduce the impacts that are happening, particularly on our vulnerable road users when they get into crashes? How we can make our roadway safer? What are those infrastructure projects that we can pursue that will slow people down, that make things safer in general? How can we improve post-crash care to get crashes off roadways as quickly as possible? So we don't have any secondary crashes? And then how can we make safer users? And those tend to be strategies with educational campaigns. Next slide, please. At the end of the day, what the safe systems approach is, is to try and get to a place where we have a system in place that can accommodate the human mistakes that are going to happen and accommodate the crashes that may happen while keeping impacts on the human body at tolerable levels and reducing our fatal and severe injuries from those crashes. Excellent. Uh, so at the end of this presentation, just want to give an overview of some of the major tasks that are part of this project that we work through, as I mentioned before. Every single one of the action plans has a working group that's in, in place. There really tend to be staff and their boots on the ground that are um, additional check on some of the data that we're reviewing to make sure that we're focusing on the right areas, make sure that the policies that may be proposed are things that are, that may actually be helpful to the community. Um, we have public engagement for the city, those tend to be popular events. Or we have tables at events that are already occurring. I know there's already one event here in town back in November. Um, we also have a website at www.visionzero.cfl.gov. We call the hub site, that has a wealth of information, safety information, crash dashboard there. If you're interested in seeing how crashes are occurring through the community, we'll click on it and look at the regional level, county level, city level. A lot of great information. There is also a public comment map available at that website where any of you can go and you can drop a pin in a location that you feel unsafe traveling in the region. Leave a comment about whatever makes you feel unsafe, and then a photo if you would like. And that, that type of information is really helpful for the project team. As we go through, we have the crash unit that we're getting from crash reports. But we don't know about where there are near misses, where there may not have been a crash, but there was almost a crash. Or just something where you see that there is an issue that should be addressed. That's really extra sort of color commentary to help us as we're identifying where the priorities are. Uh, we're identifying high injury networks, which I mentioned before, are where the preponderance of crashes are happening. And we're really focusing a lot of the um, infrastructure strategies on. Next slide, please. Uh, there's a policy review that's occurring, where we reviewed all existing policies and plans that are in place, just to look for where there are opportunities or barriers to improve safety and really advance Vision Zero goals. Um, and then at the end of the day, we'll be identifying and prioritizing projects that we think will help get toward that, that goal of zero fatalities and serious injuries. And then all of that will be wrapped into a safety action plan that will come to you. When is that point? So we kicked off this effort back in September. And where we are now, um, the majority of the team, including the team that's working on the town of Oakland, are starting to identify what those projects are that may move the needle on safety. And we expect to be coming uh, to you in April, June, uh, to adopt uh, both the Vision Zero Action Plan and that Vision Zero Resolution. Yeah, that's just So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Um, I have one um, right off the bat. Well, I have one comment and one question.
My comment is, thank South for serving on hack for, I don't, it's been quite a piece of our power representative who represents the city of Metro Plan. Um, one of the things that we believe we were funding for, but I think we're way at the bottom of the list, goes for sidewalks.
And I'd like to know the status on that.
I would have to look into, into that pretty good sidewalk bundle to see where that is now, but I can follow up.
I think that that
Okay.
Um, safety.
And that will, I'm sure, end up being in, in the, the list of projects that will come out. Because you know, safety sidewalks, in particular for vulnerable road users, are very
Especially on Tubbs and Oakland Ave.
Okay.
Uh, you know, we believe we had funding, and I think South could, and I could, that we, we, um, it's been held up.
Excellent. Laura, yes. First and foremost, thank you for I've had Alice and Sarah Watson, who've come here before, now they're bringing it to sidewalk for a long, long, long time.
Okay.
And I know that some of the hurdles for you guys to help us was having a comp plan or a street plan, which we did a long time ago. We had the complete street project. We actually did it. And I brought it to Alex, and I said, now are we ready? Now can you guys fund us? So I know that the implementation grant funding, now that we have this set in place, you guys can start, you know, putting us on the top of the list. Right? As we're your model for Orange County for safety.
You're putting her on the spot.
You could bring that to Alex.
I can make decisions.
Sure. What I would, I would like to ask.
Yes.
Um, Parker, I would assume you know this. Um, what year did we do streets?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you know what year we did complete streets?
Twenty-two, I believe, if you mean where it's twenty-two.
Okay, so it's been in place.
Okay.
Actually updating it tonight.
Okay.
Um, but uh, you know, since you're here, we just would like some more information.
Okay, well, what I could say is I'll, I'll put in a plug and find out where things are with okay, the sidewalk requests and any requests for the, the complete streets plan that you have. Um, in terms of the streets for all funding, once the action plan is actually adopted, then yes, you'll be eligible to pursue funding. And what we are going to be doing, because the NOPA actually for the implementation grants came out last week, it's due in April, it'll be before we're done with these action plans. So likely be next year that we're pursuing implementation funding. However, if there is supplemental planning feasibility, um, studies that need to happen to get closer towards actual
Do whatever we need to do.
One of the sorts of things that we can, that we can pursue, so I'll take that.
I, I will say that, um, knowing that um, in two weeks, I'm not going to be here anymore. Okay, um, I know that this commission will do what they need. So do we have any other questions at the table?
No questions coming. How often do you go to those meetings?
At least uh, every other month or every three months, depending on
Yeah. Often. There are about nine of them.
Right, I know nine of them are units.
Any question? Question, question? All right, anybody in the audience have a question? Hey. Well, thank you for taking the time to be here and we look forward to hearing about where our sidewalk plan is. Andy, do you have anything?
I have.
All right. So we have a couple of proclamations. Um, the first one is Women's History Month. Am I, am I on track? Okay, thank you. Town of Oakland Women's History Month, whereas Women's History Month is an opportunity to celebrate and honor women and girls of every race, class, and ethnic background who lead and contribute to the growth and strength of our nation and its communities. And whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. And whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing a majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement in which there is a more just, more and just society for all. We don't have anybody here, right? We got one more. This is Town of Oakland Irish-American, and I'm ninety-eight percent Irish, so I kind of like this one. Heritage Month. Whereas by seventeen seventy-six, nearly three hundred thousand Irish nationals had immigrated to the American colonies and played a crucial role in America's war for independence. And whereas five signers of the Declaration of Independence of Irish descent and three signers were Irish-born. Whereas Irish-Americans helped to fashion a system of government for our young nation. And whereas twenty-two presidents have proudly proclaimed their Irish-American heritage. And whereas the Irish first came to Spanish La Florida in the fifteen hundreds, first, first as missionaries and mercenary soldiers, and then as planters, traders, businessmen, doctors, and administrators. Whereas three of the Irish governors of La Florida were actually Irish military officers. Whereas Father Richard Arthur, an Irish-born priest from Limerick, was appointed parish priest for St. Augustine in fifteen ninety-seven. An ecclesiastical judge of La Florida established the first public school in America and opened it to both boys and girls of all races. Whereas Andrew Jackson, whose family came from County Antrim, served as Florida's military governor following its acquisition by the United States. Whereas Irish-Americans, since Americans inception, have provided and continue to provide leadership and service to this nation's political business and religious establishments. Where is fitting and proper to celebrate the rich cultural heritage and the many valuable contributions of Irish-Americans?
Wow.
That's quite interesting, I didn't know all that. All right, um, so here we are, we're at public forum. Uh, anybody who is here who wishes to speak on a subject that is not on the agenda, we um, asked you to keep your comments to about three minutes. And we ask you to make sure you sign in and tell us who you are. Do I have any takers? Consent agenda. Do we have anything we want to pull out of this? Or are we good to make a motion?
I'm good to make a motion.
Thank you.
Make a motion to accept consent agenda. I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Um, do we have any questions or comments at the table? Okay, do we have any questions or comments in the audience? Okay, I'll bring it back to the table, all in favor? Resolutions, Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash oh-one, two thousand and twenty-four Water and Wastewater Financial Forecast. And I believe we have Ralph Ellis here and Parker to help us with this. And I think we have a present, yeah, we have the presentation. So if anybody wants these presentations, they're over at the table.
Okay, uh, Mayor Commissioners, thank you.
We actually have some people that are not familiar faces to me, anyway. Um, this is Mike Parker, and I think everybody in town knows Parker. But he is our uh, Public Works Director. Extraordinary.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Mike Parker, Public Works Director for the town.
Extraordinary.
Tonight, I'm going to update you the two thousand twenty-four Water and Wastewater Financial Forecast Report, which gives you a snapshot of the overall water and sewer utilities. So periodically, the town reviews the water and sewer utility rates being charged to see if they're providing a sufficient revenue stream. That's the revenue side of things. Then you have the expenses. Expenditures include operational expenses, which consists of staffing requirements, electric services, chemicals, treatment charges, equipment, engineering, and the list goes on. Um, expenditures also include capital improvements, which consists of new infrastructure, further growing population, as well as regulatory requirements. Did you know that the state of Florida mandates regulatory requirements that include annual testing of the nearly two hundred and fifty fire hydrants that we have? The annual, uh, we, we actually have a program that exercises all of the water system control valves, which at last count, there were more than five hundred of those. And these are done on an annual basis. The backflow program expenses, we have about six hundred homes now that are on the uh, the backflow testing cycle. And last year, this is the big one, various contaminant monitoring tests. Last year, more than a hundred samples from the water system were allocated, and more than a hundred and seventy-five tests were performed. Staff also provides more than thirty regulatory reports annually. And like I said, the list goes on. Expenditures also include the various emergencies, pipeline breaks, lift station pump failures, lightning strikes, even vehicle accidents that impact infrastructure. You may recall several months ago, when I was called away from a commission meeting because a car had struck and damaged the sewer pump station that routinely pumps more than a hundred and thirty thousand gallons a day to Clermont for treatment. That's a hundred and thirty thousand gallons of raw sewage. While the damage was minimal, we came within mere inches of a catastrophic failure. It's pretty mind-boggling. Your utility dollars are going toward a lot of different expenses that most users don't even think about or know about. With that, I'd like to introduce Joe Williams with Ralph Ellis, a financial firm that handles things like this, to present their findings and make their recommendations for maintaining a fiscally sound utility.
Thank you. Thank you for uh, stopping that catastrophic event that could have happened for all of us and nobody knew. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You're out there to the wee hours. I know, we know. He told us, but the audience doesn't know.
And that's my job.
Yeah, and waters, the water utility the water utility is a seven-day-a-week process. And Mike volunteers his time on Sundays to the water utility.
Alright. Thanks.
Alright. Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, for having us and for having us, you know, help look at your rates and other town financials from time to time. Uh, we always enjoy working with you all. Next slide. So for this study, um, it's been a few years since we updated the financial forecast for the water and wastewater system. So, Mike asked us to come take a look and make sure everything was working well. We originally set the wastewater rates back in about two thousand eighteen, um, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen timeframe. So it's been coming up on five, six years since we've really looked at those. And, you know, growth has happened, so the, the system is sort of filling out as we, as we had forecasted back then with the new developments. Um, the one thing that happened a little bit faster than we expected was the rate of increase that Clermont is charging their own customers as well as you as a wholesale customer. So, across the board in Clermont, they had to raise their rates. Uh, so that's being passed down the chain. Um, and you have not adjusted your rates since you've been incurring those increases from Clermont yet. So that's going to be one of the things that we're addressing. And, uh, just to note, there, there's not a resolution in front of you tonight. We had to meet the noticing requirements of the Florida statute. So at your next meeting in mid-March, there will be that resolution for you to take these recommendations into account and potentially adopt them. And also with this presentation, I'm going to keep it a little bit higher level, but happy to answer any questions that maybe are not obvious or, uh, want, you want to discuss further. And just the message before we dive in is that really the, the system overall combined between water and wastewater is healthy. It's in good shape. And we're making relatively minor tweaks and updates to kind of bring it back in line with where you need to be after having two years not updating everything. Um, so things are overall looking good. So, next slide. Um, so few key assumptions and notes. Uh, we're expecting continued customer growth. There's several single-family developments that are ongoing. Uh, most of them are going to have water and wastewater. There's maybe a little bit of gap between both, having both services, but mostly across the board, we're having both. And we do take your adopted town budget for the utility. And then we apply escalation factors and considerations for growth going forward. Um, having more customers, the volume of wastewater that you're sending into Clermont is increasing as well as the rate per thousand gallons that Clermont charges you is increasing. That's all factored in. And a big model that would maintain. And then, really, the, one of the biggest challenges of utilities post-COVID is the capital improvement program. So the capital costs of maintaining and upgrading your utility is, just for doing the same projects, is becoming significantly more expensive. And that's across the board, across the state. Everyone's running into major funding challenges. You all are in a good position because you've received a lot of grant funding or have prospects for a lot of grant funding. So your utility can largely operate, especially on the water side, at annual inflationary rate adjustments. If you didn't have all the grant funding that you're getting, especially for the stormwater harvesting plant that we'll talk about a little bit, you would be looking at much higher rate adjustments than what we have in front of you. So I know Mike Parker and, um, has played a large role in the grants, and you hire, uh, you know, some legislative grant finders, and so that, that all is working really well.
Been very successful, say, um, millions and millions of dollars over the year.
Yeah, that's been tremendous. So, next slide. On the next one, we'll talk about the capital improvement plan a little bit. I know it's a little small on the screen. Um, but really, the, the stormwater harvesting plant, this is the first phase. That's the big project that you're going after right now. And that's to address water supply challenges. So, with your water management district, you have certain allowances of how much groundwater you're allowed to use. You're really right at, right near the limit, um, of that capacity that you're allowed to be using. So you need to find alternative water supply. And this is going to be for those irrigation customers so that they're not using water from the offer to spread under lawns. Uh, it's a big investment. You know, the total project for the first phase is four point two, four point three million dollars. A lot of that is grant-funded. And then to help with the remaining funds, you're taking out a, a twenty-year loan from the state. Very low interest rates with state revolving loan funds. Um, so that's a very advantageous, cost, cost advantageous method of financing. And then there's several other projects across the board between water, wastewater. Uh, developers are helping fund projects where there are outstanding lines, where the lines do not reach their developments right now. So just want to point out, you have about nine point three million dollars, you know, for a relatively small utility system. And if we go to slide, finish how you're actually funding it. So on the top, you know, revenues and reserves, you have, you do have cash in the bank built up over several years. And every year when you charge rates to customers, you have a little bit of excess funds, and that's designed to be available to fund capital projects. Um, impact fees, so when new homes are built, new businesses come, they pay an impact fee, an upfront fee for their portion of the capital investments you've made in the system. You have some debt funding, so that's primarily the, the stormwater harvesting plant in the first two years, twenty-four, twenty-five. And then in twenty-seven, you start getting into the design, looking at a second phase of stormwater harvesting. Most of that project is going to happen after twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine period. So it's out in the future. And there, there is potential that you wouldn't need that second loan, uh, depending on how, how things go over time. And then grants and developer funding, you can see that's a big chunk of the projects that are being created. Uh, five million out of the nine million dollars. And so next slide, moving to the revenue sufficiency forecast. And just to talk a, a little bit about your existing rate structure. So, for, you know, for being a customer, every month you pay a minimum charge. You're connected to water, you pay twenty dollars and forty cents. And that includes your, your first, um, three thousand gallons. And then for wastewater, if you're a wastewater customer, you pay nineteen dollars a month. That does not include any consumption. And as you, um, multifamily units, you have one customer that pays per multifamily unit right now. Um, they have a seventy percent factor of that single family per unit. And then as your larger, larger meter sizes, commercial customers, and you place more demand on the system. Uh, for water, you pay a escalated base charge. And for wastewater, right now, you don't. But as you'll see through the presentation, that's one of the things we're going to be kind of updating. Um, is bringing that escalating base charge into consideration for wastewater. And then next slide. And this should say consumption charge, so again. Uh, but as you pay, as you use water every month, the more you use, the more you pay. And that's largely based on, one, promoting conservation. And two, the more people use, the more the town has to invest in storage and pumping and other components of the system that are increasingly more costly. And for wastewater, right now, we're charging six dollars per thousand. And just make a mental note of that six dollar number, because that'll come into play in a couple of slides where I talk about, uh, what Clermont is charging you. So six dollars per thousand full water we charge its customers. And so in the next slide, we kept those rates that we just talked about for the water system in play and didn't adjust them at all through twenty twenty-nine. You can see that largely you do pretty well. You can clean a gap between your operating expenses and your debt service. So those are the bars. The dark blue black color is the operating expenses. The green color is your debt service. So that's for the water tower pumping improvements you've done. And then out in twenty twenty-nine, you can see the green, the green bar is larger. It's, it's expanding because now your additional debt service from the stormwater harvesting plant is going to come, come due for payment to the state. And so that red line, um, that's your annual revenues. And so if you're not adjusting your rates every year and you're just adding customers, you can see that by twenty twenty-nine, you're kind of in a spot where you need some reading. And I will say that the, the line goes up and then back down a little because you collect connection fees from when new development happens. And that's a pretty significant source of funding. So, right now, we're, we kind of have the road front loaded, and there's not all the future prospective growth that could happen built in. We could try to keep a conservative forecast on what was most likely.
Are we changing the impact fees, uh, as we get to twenty twenty-nine? Also, are we reviewing that to increase it?
You, you probably will. We have not looked at increasing those yet. We're waiting for, largely waiting for the stormwater harvesting plant and grant funding dynamics to play out before we got in too early and didn't know about grant funding, or, because that, that's considered in the impact.
You can't possibly be, uh, charging the impact fee the same that we're charging. I think the last time we moved it was like five years ago, or? Oh, Steve's not here, Andy. So we would have to revisit that.
It, it probably makes sense to look at it now that you know what the stormwater harvesting plan is going to be, because the impact fee is based on the, the major plants and lines that you have in place. And you haven't had to make extremely significant upgrades there yet. So a lot of the underlying costs would be similar. But now that the stormwater harvesting plan is coming into play, there is a, a major happening. Yeah, that, that should be taken.
Well, you know, I'm like a broken record. You know, guys need to keep looking at this stuff on continual basis. You know, all our copies, all our, you know, and so that we continue to stay perfect.
And, and Mayor, that, that's what we're doing with, with this, uh, presentation. Uh, you know, we're, we're keeping things moving like that. I think the, uh, impact, the wastewater impact fee was raised, uh, about four years ago. And it's, it's, uh, it's probably due, but again, we just had to see how, how these capital improvements stand out before we did that.
Thank you.
I just, I say that over and over again. You won't hear it, you won't hear it after this.
You'll, you'll hear it from me after this.
You will.
Yeah, it's well taken, and it's a, it's a great proactive position for you all to be in.
Yep.
Um, so next slide, so wastewater run efficiency. Um, you can see that we kept the scale on the chart the same so that you can see relat- relatively how much smaller the wastewater system is than water. Um, and again, the bars going up are the expenses, and the red line is the revenues. But at this point, you've, you've fallen slightly behind. You know, we haven't adjusted those rates since we first put them in in twenty eighteen. And on the, the bottom bullet there, right, so when we first started this program, Clermont was charging you four dollars and eighty-seven thousand. As of this past October, they're now charging you six dollars and four cents per thousand. And you're charging your customers six dollars per thousand. So you're actually losing money at this point, every time your customers use wastewater service. Uh, so that's a correction that we're going to make. And the, the real correction is that they've increased their rate, you know, about a dollar twenty-five over that period of time. So we're going to take your six dollars, and we're just going to move it up to the dollar twenty-five to seven dollars and twenty-five cents. That's the recommendation. If you like catch up, not try to factor in any other cost increases that have happened. We're going to catch up there initially. And then in the future, as Clermont passes through rate adjustments to you, you're going to pass that through to your rate as well. And they have adopted rates for the next three years, and that six dollars and four cents is going to increase by right around fifty cents per year, each year for the next three years. So that would kind of be your expectation of passing that through to your customers, about fifty cents a year on the recent charge.
There's something we can do about that, or just Clermont or Lake County is going to pass that buck to us, and we're just going to absorb it?
Yeah, so that, that's Clermont, and, you know, full disclosure, our company works for Clermont and does their rate study. And that, that increases that you're seeing, they're passing through to their retail, everyone who has wastewater in the city as well. So it's not they're not doing any games where it's, you know, oh, our wholesale customers are going to pay eight percent more, but our retail customers are going to pay three percent more. It's across the board based on the investments that they're making to provide wastewater.
So, uh, Commissioner, the local agreement that we have in Clermont for wastewater treatment, it, uh, has an escalator built into it, which is not, it's not any different than the escalator that we have built in to the town of Monver, uh, for us providing them water. It's a very common way of doing that. Uh, and that's basically what it is.
It's, it's an explanation that we all want to hear, you know, who's negotiating this and how they're passing the buck. Good. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's a great question. We, we feel, in this situation, uh, feel okay about how they're, they're treating everyone. Um, so next slide, we, we put them together because you really have a combined enterprise. Um, but we really do want to focus on equity between water and wastewater, because the customer bases are different. So, you know, you don't, not everyone has wastewater service. So we want those who have wastewater surgeons to be able to pay their own way for the cost of the wastewater system. So that's the focus of part of the outcomes here. Uh, so next slide. I'm, I'm a couple there. I'll go one more. Okay. So the recommendation is that we're going to be looking at a mid-year adjustment to like catch up largely on the wastewater usage rate. So that's the dollar twenty-five, from six dollars to seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And we're thinking that would happen in the billing cycle after April first. Um, you have the resolution in front of you again in your next meeting in mid-March. So from the April bills, that would be when you're looking at the effective date. The water multifamily per unit, um, just you know, the way math works, sometimes it's fallen a little bit out of sync with the seventy percent that it's intended to be. So correcting that to be the appropriate seventy percent factor. And then establishing those higher base charges for the wastewater customers, larger non-residential customers, mostly that have a wastewater service. Uh, there's somewhere less than ten customers that would be affected by that base charge adjustment on wastewater. And the next slide. So beyond April, then you're looking at October of this year. So, you know, about mid-year, six months later. Uh, the water would continue to be increased by CPI. And the technical index is a CPU. It's all urban consumers. It's the one that is mostly talked about. When you see CPI, that's inflation. That's the index. So continue to do that on your water rates. And on wastewater, uh, since we showed that you're a little bit behind, and, you know, we really wanted to create a gap between revenues and expenses so that you have the ability to build up your reserve funds a little bit to address future capital improvements. If there's any emergencies that do happen, you can demonstrate that wastewater is paying their share. Or is building the reserve to use on, you know, potential major lift station crash or breakdown. Uh, you want to have the funds built. So we're getting for the base charges on wastewater, five percent a year for October twenty twenty-four and October twenty twenty-five. So I think that's going to be a little bit higher than the CPI. Based on current numbers. And then, again, the usage charges will be passed through from Clermont. And then going out three years, so October twenty twenty-six, and you'd be looking at the base charges for wastewater going to that annual indexing program similar to water. Alright, so try to keep it fairly simple. So it's two years of a little bit higher increases. Like catch up a little bit, help create that funding gap that you need to build reserves. Um, so then we have a, a couple of slides. Can touch on these briefly. So this is the water base charge is what that looks like between right now and then on April. So you can see the multifamily per unit is sort of highlighted there. Uh, that's going up to be back in line with seventy percent. Nothing else is changing on water base charges. Wastewater base charges, you can see the the single fam- the residential and the five-eighth-inch meter multifamily saying same. And then we're introducing the escalations on meter sizes. And just for reference, the, the escalations per meter size we're using are standard industry practice meter equivalents based on how much flow you can get out of a meter. It's very common to have a structure like this. Next slide. And then the rate relationship, they got from six dollars to seven twenty-five. And so next, get back into the charts a little bit. So a proposed rate. So I proposed rates, this is water fixing the seventy percent and then continuing the CPI. You can see on twenty twenty nine, we we maintain a gap. So we're so good about that. Um, and really, you know, it gives you the the ability to to keep the funding, add some reserves that when you come time for second phase of stormwater harvesting, you have some funds, you have some leverage to continue funding that program. If you don't get as many grants or if you need to do loans, you don't have to do a full loan, you have some cash to help with that. Next, on wastewater, again, it's a it's a smaller program and we're not trying to, you know, we're trying to phase in the rates as much as possible um to avoid those major shocks and increase the. So it is a much smaller gap, but you are creating a gap. And if you're just passing through those wastewater increases from Clermont, you'll be in a pretty good spot to at least at least keep up. And then over time, as you connect more customers, um, really build up a little bit more of a gap on wastewater, drive more funding. The really good part about wastewater is you have a pretty much very new system. So the maintenance is going to be a little ways out for the most part. Uh, so yeah, we we feel good that the gap is smaller, feel okay about it. And overall, the system is is really strong. Uh, so next slide, so combined, again, just demonstrate that revenues are out of the expense of debt service. And next slide. The fund balance workout. Um, we do recommend that you keep a minimum, you know, bare minimum of about two hundred and seventy days, nine months or so. Uh, based on the size of your system, it's a it's a little higher than we recommend in other places. But, you know, it's a million and a half to two million dollars. If there's any catastrophic, right, event, that's going to get eaten up pretty quickly. So you want to have, you know, at least a couple of million dollars around for those types of situations.
Our auditor lectures us every year.
Yeah, and if, you know, if you look at the at your audit, right, and you look at your balance sheet, the utility is going to be one of your bigger systems in terms of total asset value. And most of it you don't see is so it's very prudent to keep a lot of a lot of funding.
When it does work, we'll do that.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, you want to be able to fix it. Um, so again, you have you have some funds and all right, so comparison. Um, mostly local communities, uh, we don't have everybody, we have a a good mix of folks. You know, kind of upper, upper level, you have a small customer base, you know, to provide the same level of service and same facilities that everybody else. So one of the things about utilities is economies of scale. So the more, you know, the more customers you can get, usually you can minimize the cost of per person for those fixed charges of the utility across more people. Um, but you are very competitive, seventy five going up to about eighty dollars a month for someone who uses five thousand gallons. Um, and I did write down a couple others here. So Monver, you know, they're right now, they're right at seventy five dollars as well. Um, and then a couple from Lake County, so a little north. Eustis is seventy five dollars. Yumatilla, Yumatilla and Lady Lake are about eighty four dollars. So just another couple that are right there around you guys. Um, you're definitely not out of line with what we see across the state or clearly in the in the region. Um, there's some, you know, there's some who are lower, maybe they haven't increased their rates as much. Uh, we already talked about Clermont, their wastewater bills are going up eight percent for the next three or four. Uh, so there's, you know, there's activity happening, Winter Garden. They they have some major hundred million dollar wastewater plant that they have to do or something like that. So to be, you know, to be determined on how low people say in the forty or fifty dollar range versus picking up above that. And lastly, just to summarize the recommendations again, see these next month and a resolution for you to consider. So wastewater usage rates, resetting this the multifamily factor on water to seventy percent. And the wastewater base charges increasing by meter size for the larger customers based on their larger purposes.
So I think my first question is, um, this presentation, we are not asking this until. And, um.
Well, you would still be here. You'll still be here for next meeting.
Even thinking that. Um, so do you, we like. Do you have any other questions?
Pretty solid again, same as uh you were saying. As much as we can revisit this thing better off.
Um, so do we have any questions from now? Come on up, you have to tell us who we are.
Hi, Kristen Keller, twenty five eleven Stone Creek Court, and I'm not really sure who to address this to. But um, my question is, we talked about impact fees were brought up. There's current developments that I'm assuming are approved, um, Riley Farms, The Grove, with those I'm assuming are under current impact fees. And and then with future developments, I was just like planning and zoning last week that are being proposed. You know, again, I would say that it probably needs to be looked at more often because development is going to be happening here more and more. And we are a small town and those, obviously, I'm, you know, I live in Longleaf and we talk about our water a lot in Longleaf. So I'm just curious, like, are those two existing developments already established?
Yeah.
Impact fees, whether it's utility or roads or whatever recreation, those are new at the time of building permit issues. So they're not built yet, so, you know, they're not being charged yet.
So for those residential developments, would it be like per house that they're going to build?
Residential.
Per residence and then on the commercial developments that may come along later? It would be based on the buildings?
Yes, we have the matrix that explains how to uh charge for the.
Okay.
And then I think a point of reference, and Parker, you can tell me if I'm um correct.
Impact fees are for things that are new.
Right.
You cannot, you know, you can't use impact fees to raise your water.
I know, I understand that, yeah. And Tara, I was just wanting to make sure that the developments, you know, that are already, I'm assuming under their development agreements, which I learned about last week. Um, there's impact fees for those houses like in Riley have probably already been established.
No.
It's that.
Okay, so if we do, if they do get, if the commission does raise them, then that would affect.
First thing to answer one of your questions for that concern, the sooner the better. We don't like to leave any money on the table. So if they haven't pulled a permit, we're going to do the study quickly.
Right, yeah, which is my broken records. Um, so anyway, thank you very much. Um, do we have any other questions?
Donna. On the why I don't know this. Um, Donna Reed, one hundred Vandermeer. Um, do we all pay wastewater?
No, only people who are on sewer.
Thank you, that was quick, right?
Yeah, and eventually, you know, we're, you know, that's a hot topic of conversation about when we are going to, you know, hook on people who have existing subject. That's a real headache. So, um, any have anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. God bless you for doing this kind of.
We'll we'll be back on March twelfth, the press, which.
Yep.
Feel free to show up.
I think it's pretty cool.
Hey.
It is.
I know, people, people like that kind of stuff.
And some don't, right?
All right, um. Okay, folks, we're moving on um to Lake Apopka dredging contract. Andy, are you taking this one?
Yeah, so good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor, member of the town commission. Um, the item for you is the Lake Apopka John's Lake Outfall sand removal. Project, uh, get just to give you a little background. In March of twenty twenty three, the town entered into a contract with Solitude Lake Management to restore the historical northerly flow of water from the John's Lake Outfall Canal into Lake Apopka and to reinforce the banks of the newly relocated canal with native vegetation. In addition, the contractor agreed to remove sediment directly in front of two dock structures located west of the canal. The agreement with the contractor required approximately one to three feet of sediment to be removed in specific areas, which the contractor did to a large degree. However, the stubborn finding sand removal provided very little relief in this area. Um, the contractor that was selected, um, also, while they removed the one to three feet, um, don't feel that they had the proper equipment um to be doing this sort of project. Uh, however, they did meet the scope and the intent in the first contract. On November of twenty twenty three, the town commission voted to enter into a a contract with Sea Level Development LLC to broaden the project area and remove a large quantity of sand utilizing hydraulic dredging equipment. The town commission additionally requested an engineer provide oversight of the project and work performed by the contractor. The proposed contractor contract was drafted with the assistance of the project engineer, Kim Lee Horn, and the town's attorney. The total cost of the project remains at one hundred and twenty thousand and a defined project area has been identified along with the requirement that the contractor dredge a minimum of five feet below the normal water level of lake of the lake as depicted in exhibit A. It's also important to note that per the permits um that are had to be acquired for the project, that they can dredge no deeper than the existing lake bottom that's there. Um, so, but at minimum five feet below uh the surface. Town staff has received home or harmless and release agreements from both property owners directly affected by the project. Uh, staff's recommendation um is to approve the contract with Sea Level Development LLC in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand. Um, and the attachments that you have uh before you this evening is a contract with Sea Level Development LLC, uh, which has been reviewed by the town attorney and two whole harmless agreements that was drafted um by our town attorney. Um, the project, uh, you look at exhibit A shows the dredging limits um of the project. And then there exhibit B talks about the timeline as to when the contractor would begin the project. And then exhibit C talks about the payment schedule um that you see uh in the contract. So that being said, um, I've got no no further information to present. Um, staff recommends approval of the contractor contract with Sea Level Development in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay, so I'm going to go. Uh, while I'm ha- very happy that uh we have engineering plan on this, I do not feel like we are taking a comprehensive look at the canal. And I still am not in favor of it. But um, we have already voted, the commissions are in voted to approve it. So I'm going to leave it at that. But um, this is, you know, I and I'm also happy Andy went to a meeting Friday with Orange County, um, with the expectations, John Weiss.
Yeah, yes.
With John Weiss, um, talk about this canal overall. This is not a project that can be done quickly. And I think we proved that the first time around. So uh, I'm happy that we stepped back for a couple of months and did some due diligence, but I'm still not comfortable with it. You have any other?
I'm also happy that we stepped back. Happy that we.
Yes. Absolutely.
And like you said, it's going to take a long time to get done from one end to the other. I don't know how long it's going to take.
Well, we and we have a fiduciary responsibility to this town. And this is a heck of a lot of money to spend on a very short piece of the canal. So, um, that's. My thought.
For that timeline to take years to that amount is something that we're going to spend, want to get all this through together and finalize one end of the canal to the other.
It's going to be a whole lot more than that.
Yeah, oh, yeah. This to me seems to be like, we already did, we're the first ones to put that money up. So I believe that we can all finish filing, I can put one more dollar into this. All the rest of the parties who you we've been talking to.
I, but you know, it it remains to be seen. I just think that um after the first um time we tried this, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse, I think we should have stepped back and I don't think we have. So, um, like I said, I have always campaigned for a more comprehensive plan. We were working on that before um other parties stepped in to uh, you know, take, take a point of view on this. And I'm one vote and I I just absolutely don't agree.
I'm happy with what we did now.
I am happy that we did the engineering, but that was one hard fought fight. So, anyway, um, do we have anything else at the table?
No, I'm happy with the contract. I'm happy with the way it went. I I stand by where I was on it. Started, but again, I'm not going to go over that whole thing again.
It is what it is. So.
You know, we didn't see the the first contract. And that first contract, the work that was performed is not what we discovered in the commission meeting. And it's unfortunate that we didn't see, because I I would never approve that we did contract. And that's why we're here today, because we had a staff member that's no longer with the town, made other arrangements. And it was the the contract, in my opinion, was pathetic. And the commission did not vote to do the work that was performed out there. It was a totally different scope.
Okay. Well, I think we there are lessons learned here. And um, you know, like I said, we, I just really, I wish that we had taken more time. That's all I can say. So, um, do we have anything else at the table?
I agree with Rick, he did not vote on the contract that was performed, not the scope of work. This contract is the scope of work.
Okay.
We've been there and here we are now, so.
Okay.
So, anything else at the table? All right, um, is there anybody here who wishes to speak about this? We ask that you keep your comments brief. Come on up, tell us who you are.
My name is Darrell Langell, and thanks, Madam Mayor, um, for your insights on this. You've had many years of experience and I would just like the commission and those that are running for office in the future that we in Oakland are going to watch and remember that she tried to slow this down. And all of you have voted for this and and agreed on this and the scope of work. So you will be held responsible one way or the other.
Thank you.
I believe in what you're saying is doing our due diligence and making sure that we understand. There's many projects that I've heard certain folks at this table say that scope of work changed while during the process and the different things that have happened over the years. But just know that Oakland is growing and we cannot tolerate the waste of a hundred and plus thousand dollars to get little. So I appreciate your insights here and I just hope that everybody else here have taken her wisdom into consideration and even voted.
Well, and to to be fair, um, Joseph did not vote for this.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, anybody else? All right, I need a motion.
I will make the motion to uh accept and go forward with the contract with that was presented for the work to be done by sea level uh as it's presented.
And to require Andy to sign the contract because I'm not going to sign it.
And to require Andy to sign the contract.
All right, do I have a second? Any further comments, questions? All in favor?
High.
Opposed? Nay? Are you nay, Joseph? So we're right where we were before. Um, but this is the work will move forward.
All right, complete street plan amendment. I'm interested in this one.
Okay. And listeners, again, thank you for the record scan, but we're direct past. The town commission adopted the complete street master plan in January twenty twenty two. Followed the favor mostly to Oakland Avenue and Cup Street. It gave us options that could be used for others. that could be used for other streets or improvements on other streets request. The paving of the Charter School drop off loop last year, along with the recent paving of North Star Street this year, brought the line that had been unintentionally omitted from the complete street plan. So not to be confused with the bone jar in and keep rattling seed bumps. Then that one about sea roads or sea pavements, not their other ones.
Pools is a nicer word.
Yeah, they weren't they weren't contemplated in the in the original plan. While these are not practical in all scenarios, they do have their place and should be considered. Additionally, this this relook at the master plan gave us an opportunity to assess several other traffic calming options. These are also included in this amendment and could be considered in future roadway improvements. But with that, I'd like to introduce our traffic and transportation guru, Ms. Myra Monreal. We'll take you through these additional traffic calming options.
Hi. My name is Myra. I'm a public health engineer. Excited to see so many people.
Try try and talk real loud.
Talk really loud. Trying to be like, try to be really tall. So my name is Myra, and I'm here to talk about some of the proposed amendments to your previously adopted complete streets master plan. Next slide. So what you're going to see in here tonight is a presentation of, one, where we have come, right here in Oakland, and two, where you're going. Next slide. I think it's important to start with the timeline so that we can all see how far we've come. From when the original bridge was built to the opening of the West Orange Trail. And if you look to the right, you see a bunch of things that have been done in the last years. And that's something you should be really proud of because that's no small feat for towns. Next slide. Now, the complete streets master plan that you do in twenty-two, it outlines your. But I think we all know there are some near term improvements that can be done quickly and economically, you know. I've outlined here some of the specific tools in the toolbox, which can be used to get you closer to that alternate vision, right? I think it's important to note that this is not a one size fits all kind of proposal. This is more, it's a menu of items that town staff will implement based on the character and the conditions of a specific location. I also think the timing of this is great with the Vision Zero Plan, Metro Plan and Laura. And, you know, you have here a wonderful public works director that has the gift of getting grant money. Well, you know, I just, you know, to see him in action, I mean, even before this meeting, I don't know if you saw, there was a little huddle. So some of the concerns that you were having in some of the projects that you were trying to kind of convey how important it was. I was like, oh, they were just talking a few minutes. So but again, even the Vision Zero implementation plan, that's something that takes years, right? We all know you get funding for Metro Plan, you get design, you get procurement, you know, it's it's not something that you can do or see in six months. And so what we're looking at now are some of those near term improvements that can be done. And I think the important thing here is the character and the conditions of the specific location, right? So we looked at a bunch of places. You go to the next slide. And it always helps to feel like to visually see these tools and how they've been implemented in other locations and why. So these two images, in case you shop, are from Winter Garden Village, and they have lots of foot traffic and they have lots of car traffic. So if you look at the picture on the left, you can see that they raised the pedestrian crosswalk, okay? So the engineer in me loves efficiency, and this raised crosswalk does many things for me. It lets the pedestrians know where to cross. The fact that it's raised means that the height of the pedestrians closer to the eye level of a vehicle of a driver. And so you can have eye contact. I know I'm one of those weird people that every time I go through a crosswalk, I'm waving at you, right? I want to know that you saw me. And then even for the driver, it lets them know where to stop. You know, sometimes you'll hear from drivers, they don't know where to stop. They didn't see the stop bar. Well, you know, this is something visually that you can definitely see. Picture on the right is something that could be used in areas where there is less pedestrian activity. So it can be something as simple as a change in texture of material. And I know we've done this in some of the new residential developments where we thought it was an area of a lot of pedestrian activity or a very important intersection. Try to heighten the level of the importance of that intersection by showing a change in texture. So that's something you'd already do now. The next slide is one of those things that we are also in Oakland. And so it's totally appropriate to use nature to help you define the spaces for the people who walk and the people drive. So what you guys have been doing for years, even new development like Hamlin, picture on the left is showing, you know, they're using things like a split rail fence, mature street trees to kind of help delineate the space on their new roadways. The picture on the right, in neighboring towns that already have great trees canopy like you do here, you know, that they've created chicanes in the center with some landscape. If you go to the next slide, I think my message here is basically to continue what you're doing well and do it here in Oakland in the Oakland way. So you can see a lot of these examples exist already around town, maybe not from a traffic, complete streets, transportation calming perspective. But you have split rail fence all over town. The picture on the left, you can see the picture on the right, the use of recycled concrete is all over town. And that's something, those are two things we can use to help define the roadways and the intersections. And that's especially important when you look at unpaid roads, which we'll talk about in a food slide. All right, so here's the example of the unpaid road. And I know your public works group is working really hard at defining those intersections. But I think it's also one of those things so that it's not a free for all, let's actually define the edge. And let's define the edge in the Oakland way. And so that's again, using some of the elements that you already do and use around town, split rail fence, recycle concrete. It it's kind of like a way to make it show that it belongs and also gives a lot of visual clues to drivers. Next slide. So here's another street. This is one of your paved road examples. Again, you guys are doing a lot of things right already. You already have a natural chicane like they do in Gotha, where there's a mature street tree in the middle of it. We're take and all we're saying is let's take it another step further. Let's add some split rail fence around it, you know, and use it along the edge of the roadways and then put the street trees behind the fence. And then over time, you'll get the canopy that you have in other places around shop. Next slide. So if you want to talk about pedestrian crossings, you already have some well-defined, well-utilized pedestrian crossings. I thought I'd just highlight a few of them here, one in front of the Charter School, another in front of by the West Orange Trail. You know, these are the types of crossings in Oak where you may consider putting in a raised pedestrian crossing. Highly utilized pedestrian traffic where people are going from one spot to the other. But you can still do it in in an Oakland way. Next slide. Thank you for taking the time to listen. If there's any question, really do ignore what I really do. So.
There goes likewise.
I mean, someone helped me that the other day. They were like, really enjoy counting cars. I was like, I do.
And I will tell you that I appreciate the fact that anytime we talk about and every person who comes into this room is. Whether they are or not. So I really do appreciate your expertise. I would say that this makes me feel much better. But I think Mike is trying to say we've got an issue we've got to address. I personally like the Ballers Grove, you know, where they go up and down in their brick. Or I love the, I love the streets on Gotha. I always talk about, you know, how that slow just slows traffic down and they're so pretty. So, you know, I'm I'm okay with either one of those. I just want to see what the other people at the table think.
It just gives us a chance to look at it in different areas. So I think it's, I think it's really a good thing.
Yeah.
You're right. And there's so many different things that I think that depending on what area, town we're at, something will fit a little bit better for that particular.
Like that paved road example where you already have a natural chicane. You know, let's just take it up another level. You know, we're not going to tear anything down and but, you know, raise pedestrian crossing there. That would make sense. So I think that's the big takeaway.
No, I I love the chicane everywhere.
Yeah.
Specifically in historic area, you know, as far as roads. And I like the race crosswalks. Now, there is some of the residents I've talked to concerns like per se Longley. There's a main road there that. Yes, from Highway fifty down to Oakland Avenue. Now, there's no crossway, you know, crosswalk to get one side to another. What would you recommend to slow traffic down there?
So I'm. And there's also what you have.
But on the entrance, as you loop around the townhomes through the clubhouse, how many is it?
Free for all is problem.
Right, that's the one I'm talking about.
There was a crosswalk at the four way stop, and there could be a crosswalk done, you know, closer to fifty by the townhomes that could be the table.
Let's be too. So.
Yeah, that one is being, that one's next to close to fifty is being rehabbed. This would be the opportunity to look at those options, puts up again.
So and I'm also really excited because I get animated, because we did collect some speeds because I know that was an issue. And so maybe about a year ago, we collected speeds because to see, you know, there's perceived and there's actual speeding through there. And and I will say there there are probably that, based on that data, there was a handful of specific speeders that are going to speed no matter what you put in there. They were that fast. And so that kind of outlier, speed table, a speed hump, nothing is going to slow. They're going that fast. That that is a behavioral choice that no physical item is probably going to stop that. That, and if anyone wants to look at that data, you know, we have it. The other thing, though, that I really think is important there is to kind of look at that whole neighborhood holistically. And on Sans Prilla, you also have the mailboxes, right? And so there are some natural places, if you wanted to do something, kind of like the raised pedestrian crosswalk. You know, there's two functions to that. If you were to do something in the area of the where the mailboxes are collected, that has a lot of pedestrian activity. People going to pick up their mail, sometimes like me, we send our child to go get the mail. So it could do two things. It could, you know, help the pedestrian safety for that, and then it could also slow down traffic. So I think Mike has a good handle on going through the neighborhoods and, you know, we talk about it. We look at the data to kind of decide, okay, you know, you could do, for lack of a better word, you know, speed humps every X number feet, right? The engineer in me also likes a formula, but that that really isn't going to give you the bang for your buck. So to try and find kind of like you said, where you have an existing kind of chicanes, use that in an area where you have kind of two areas where there's going to be a lot of crisscrossing. You know, rather than just simply say, well, you know, this table says we should do this and do this, and therefore let's put a crosswalk. I think staff is really good, and we want to kind of look at each thing holistically because it's not a one size fits all.
Those those mailboxes are very close to the four way stop and the clubhouse, correct? So that would.
Care about way. And I'll be, I have an experience about this. I've really been, I don't want speed humps because and I I think the data was really important because the other thing too is if you ask Oakland PD, a lot of the speeders that they pulled over, about half of them live in the neighborhood, which is another thing. So and I keep saying, you you can't expect people to respect our neighborhood when residents don't, you know. So I I have mixed feelings about the speed, the speed bumps, but.
Yeah, and I think that's why we're not recommending them.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what I think I would like, and we have more conversation to have at the table, I'm sure. But what I think, we've got two things to do here. Mike, you got to tell us what's first, second, third, and what your recommendations are when you work with Myra. And secondly, the discussion we had about the dusty streets and what we're going to do about that too. So those are two things that we're going to have to bring back.
And the other things, Mike, you can't turn around. So once we do all that, the big point of contention, Star Street, and what we're going to as we get started, have we done all that? Any recommendations of that particular place at all?
As far as the the area where the residents. No, the the staff is getting this amendment or or you want to call it an addendum, I guess, to the complete streets master plan, and then we can look at that. And it's not just going to, we're just not going to make these decisions in a vacuum. We're going to talk to the residents that live there. I spoke with Pastor Reeves, and he is not in favor of a, you know, speed table directly in front of his property. Well, that makes sense, you know, so. But in speaking with him, he is in favor of it in a different location. So we're.
He's not here, but.
It was just a matter of moving it twenty-five feet in one direction.
Well, but, you know, and that there, I always say there's a difference between leading and governing. And governing is sometimes you make decisions that people aren't going to like because not everybody's going to like it. So Myra, this is great work.
Thank you, Myra.
Hang on, hang on, Don. Joseph, did you have something?
Thank you.
Oh, okay. You're deciding, and when it comes up about, I think you called them the chicanes, the things in the center like both that has. Please, whatever you do, take into consideration the length of a fire truck or not just a fire truck, but an aerial truck. I worked at, I worked at Station Thirty, which is Gotha. And when they first put those in, we we couldn't even slowly drive around it without running over the curb on one side and then the curb on the other side, trying to leave it. So you have to think of the length of it. So the longest truck in the fire department can drive in there and drive out without. Well, you know, my my sister works for the Winter Park Police Station. And when they did that work on Denning, they can't get their trucks through. And it's nobody, everybody wants to talk about, you know, a work truck, pickup truck or whatever, but go to the fire department, find out what their longest truck is and design it because there's people that have those calculations, design it for that. And then I would be.
It's a good point. So. Tenth of demand from COVID, so you know, I. So, yeah, so no, to to build off of what you said with the chicanes, you know, and I also think, yeah, the fire engines, both their engines, not trucks. And we also have to take into account vehicles that have trailers because they have a different movement. And if you do go by that Gotha chicane, when you hear the clunk clunk, it's it's like a landscape trailer going by. And you'll see those more commonly, maybe with a fire engine. And so I think that is something that we're all keenly aware of because, you know, no one wants. no one wants to hear from someone who lives close by that is constantly hearing that noise. And so, you know, that's something in addition to the visual look of it is is something that I think we're all cognizant of.
Good. All right, so nothing else available? Anybody else in the audience? All right. So I'll bring it back. My partner's gonna bring us a recommendation based on.
Yes, definitely. You've heard all about these great traffic calming options. And some of those that are on the list, you may never see another one. It's just if if they fit, we we may do it. But anyway, staff is recommending that the town commission accept this amendment or addendum if you will to the Complete Street Master Plan originally adopted in 2022.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the amendment to the Complete Street Master Plan.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, any comments? All in favor? All righty. So we're at Town Manager Reports.
I've got no comments. No reports this evening.
There is, it's and it's posted, we're in police, film from the school. We're just set for the most far morning.
Okay, there's a really cool film from the school. It's 16 minutes long and I don't have a tolerance for that. So anyway, it's gonna be posted on the Facebook page and the website and I encourage you all to take a look at it. It's pretty cool.
It's wonderful. It really turned out well.
All right, Sal.
I just want to remind here everybody in town about Golden Eagle Award, March 6th in Ocoee. We're gonna be honoring Rusty Johnson and the Blooming Grove Ladies, the 220, 222 ladies.
They are a force to be reckoned with.
And they're gonna be receiving the Golden Eagle Award, both of them. And our town's gonna be represented. Our Troop 145 from Oakland Presbyterian will be there also helping. And I think we have a table, Andy.
Is anybody interested in?
Is anybody interested here?
I gotta get that on my calendar.
So I'll be there with my wife, along with six, how many people with tables? Eight per person for table? And not the invite?
I sent the invites, but.
You did? I missed them.
Yeah, this time. I don't think I saw.
Yeah, go out with it.
Yeah, I got flyer at my house.
We don't pay attention to Andy. We only pay attention to Atlee.
Do you want to fill in the table? Bring a tribute. There'll be an auction and all the funds go to the Boy Scouts.
How many are the table?
Eight. My wife will be two, so we need six more.
I'll send out another email tomorrow.
I guess you better send it out and burn.
Atlee. Only Kenny, I'm sorry.
The truth.
According to the preserve, O M P is gonna be Saturday, March 9th from 5:30 to 8:30. Buy tickets online at the O M P website for $45 a person. And it'll be the witness to 125 feet.
Okay, Joseph.
So February 15th was a good date. On that afternoon, we had a tri-county meeting over in Ocoee.
Yep.
Kind of scary, talked about cybersecurity. And it was a great, great presentation. There's a lot going on in, you know, a lot of foreign countries, you know, trying to hack in. And of course, they all have our cell numbers. They have everything. So local governments, protecting businesses. And so just want to share that we really want everyone to be be safe because you get all these crazy, as I can give you the example, my mother got an email saying that she paid for something and she called me frantic. My middle name's Patrick. What happened? What did I buy? I'm like, what did you buy? It was an email saying thank you for your purchase. So they're trying to get everyone, you know, try to get into all of our financials. And so just 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 be careful and be safe. And then that night we had a Black History Reception.
It was really nice.
And let me, let me say this. Jessica and staff, where our speaker lost her father a week ago. And so prior to that, you know, just a lot to bring it all together, but I just want to, you know, say thank you to the staff with Jessica and Lynn, you know, and, you know, they did a great job. Of course, the speaker came in and and did her 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 presentation. And I just want to thank the town for allowing us to to celebrate everyone. So great job with staff, great job, you know, bringing that all together. And just want to say we had a great night that night. That was it.
Mike?
I was gonna talk about the school. We got a 20th anniversary. It's had a whole lot of things going on. 20 years is a long time. But yeah, I encourage you to take the time. 16 minutes is well worth it because it's a really, really cool video of everyone and it does all through the 20 years.
I know. Somebody showed me a picture. I don't really remember. The first day of the first year of the school. And here's my little niece, who's now 25, you know, standing there with all the kids from Southern Oaks and there's Stone, right? It's Stone and then Hawk, Stone, who plays for the Seattle Seahawks. So here he is, same age, and here are all the rest of the kids. It was just hilarious.
Some of the pictures are a little funny when you look at them and then look up here at us.
Yeah, and how much older we've gotten.
I was gonna say better, but you know.
That could be, yeah, well, my husband would debate that. But anyway, we did have a great tri-county league of cities lunch. Chamber of Commerce is the same day as that. Thursday, the third Thursday of the month are busy days. So, yep, and some really good work going on here in town. So I appreciate all of that. So, and I really appreciate the fact that this room was full. I think that's just awesome. So Joseph?
I think our hearts and minds are satisfied. Very. It is 8:40 PM.
Oh, did you have anything?
Yeah, I did. So can I say it off the record?
Sure.
Okay. Some other.
As long as you're quick.
And so quick, we just won't feel bad about it. So some interesting stuff that's happened that we got together. The the milling and resurfacing of Oakland that was from the the bridge over the turnpike. This will end county lines begins tomorrow night. So you may remember, you know, that was, that was part of our global agreement with the county. So then four years ago now, that it was approved, the turnover jurisdiction of the road from the county to the town of Oakland. Anyway, you may, you may recall that the first payment, which was from Winter Garden City Limit to the Turnpike Bridge was completely two and a half years ago. So that'll be a combination of Miami and Oakland. And then the other thing, which, you know, we talked about the the utility, where's the money coming from and all that? So pleased to announce that we have another grant application. A second flight from Miami, somewhat closer to the US. It's for the trivial, it's around 2.6 million. And this this grant opportunity is from the St. John's River Water Management District. And and if it's awarded, it'll assist us with construction of that alternative water. So with all of that said earlier, we may be able to minimize those.
That's awesome.
Spent rates in reported that. And 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 so we're waiting on that and we'll hear about that later this year. And the alternative water cost of construction, the the engineers' cost estimate has now risen to 5.5 million. So the cost of everything's going up, the sooner we construct it, the better.
And we've got six.
We can't have a, I'm sorry, members of the commission, this meeting is adjourned and we can't have a, have a discussion about this.
He can. We can only.
Give provide information, but we can't discuss.
I thought we couldn't just take action.
We can't discuss items that could come before the commission.
That's why we have a.
I'm sorry.
And I'm, you know, we're waiting another $1.8 million. That is, we submitted that back last year, but that grant will.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.